Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, I welcome everybody. Cory, you want to introduce our new sewer superintendent, so he doesn't have to stay the whole meeting.
Sure. This is Joel Jacobs. He's been with us for a couple of months. He's our new Class Three wastewater operator. I'd asked him to come this evening when we do the department heads if he would like to kind of address council, kind of where we're at and what we've been doing. So he'll be here for that.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody got any questions for him before we move on?
My total, shut up.
I want you to come around here because you're going to leave and I'm not going to be able to shake your hand, so come around here and shake all our hands. Appreciate you coming down. Appreciate you getting on board.
Troy Essex, don't take any of his crap.
Literally. Shut him off.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hey, Joel.
Okay, so anybody, guess what?
How's it going down there, Joel? I mean...
It's going good. We're making progress, working through all the buildings, working through all the equipment, working through everything. So it's a slow process. It just takes time. So I've generated, started to generate a list of things that we need done. It's going to be a slow process, just...
Do you feel as though we're getting closer to the end of all the problems that were handed to you?
I don't see the problems. We're just things we need to do.
Well, yeah, but there was a lot of things that weren't right when you came down.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, just to give you a good timeframe, because it's not just the wastewater plant we're taking care of. It's the collection as well. There's also problems in the collection system. So with the two-man team, they were being pulled in different directions. So I can't really give you a timeframe right now. There's just a lot.
The main thing I was looking at is, I know that so far we've spent a lot of money on things that had to happen. I was just wondering when possibly the money flow would slow down.
No.
I don't know. I can't... Being here, to be honest with you, being here a month and a half, two months, I've watched what I've spent, but at the same time, I've gotten what I need to get.
Exactly, exactly. There's no complaints on what's been spent and what's been done. In fact, what's been done is, it's great. It's just that, you know, after, you've got to kind of look forward to your budgeting and think, well, if this slows down, we can do this or we can do that.
What I could say is, by the next year, once we get caught up with everything in the plant, it'll smooth out.
Oh, sure.
But since there's so many things behind, we're spending money to catch up on that. Like, just for example, like, I spent roughly, I think, thirteen thousand on our UV. It was in rough shape. And we need to be in EPA compliance, so I told Cory, we need to get this done. So we finally just got our last pieces in not too long ago. So, and then that takes time. Just that system alone. Me and Luke, Luke's done a great job, by the way. It's going to take a while. So it just, there's more I could spend on it, but I'm getting the bare necessities that we need.
Right.
For example, just one of those bulbs, OEM, going from the manufacturer is about three hundred and sixty-five dollars one. I have manufacturers a lot less expensive or OEM still, but they're not direct from the manufacturer. So there's other components of that system that could be fixed, but I think, in my opinion, that doesn't need to right now. So we're going to get it updated and we should be good for the next, hopefully, three years. So those, every, see, just to give you an idea, those bulbs, they last roughly twelve thousand hours. That's their peak lifespan at one hundred percent capacity. So the closer you get, I've seen them to where, the closer you get to twelve thousand, they can start dropping out here, there, all over. So the idea is you cycle them out every couple of years, one bank, second bank, to make sure you don't run into those big bills. But what we had to do is replace them all because they're all in rough shape.
Right.
But that just gives you a brief idea of what's going on with that.
Let me ask you something personal, not that personal, but do you like it here?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable? Or do you feel as though this is a place you can make home?
Absolutely. Yeah, I've enjoyed it.
I love that.
Yeah. I have enjoyed it. So I'm not going to enjoy this week with Luke being off, but hey.
I know when we talked, Joel, I interject a little bit, but it was similar to what the plant you came from, to a degree.
Yeah, the last man I came from, it was, it'd been let go. So it took me, just myself and I had a part-time guy about a year and a half to get it straightened out. So that's why it's kind of hard to give you an idea.
Sure.
We're making progress on the maintenance, getting everything up to date, but I'll make sure to take, like, progress pictures, you know, keep you guys up to date on Cory, up to date on certain things in the plant. But that way, everybody's up to speed on things.
Well, so far, I mean, there's no complaints, for me anyhow, there's no complaints. And you've been supplying Cory with information, and he's been giving us back the feedback. And so far, I think everything's just great. I just, I just hope, I hope it's a good fit for you so that you'll stick around.
I've enjoyed it. Yeah, I really have, so.
Well, we're a bunch of great people here.
I was thinking maybe a month or two down the road here, maybe we could do a walk-through with, Taylor's not here tonight, but myself, Ron, and Taylor Klepper.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I would like that because it shows that you're keeping me accountable to my job. I'm telling you guys what I'm going to do, so I would appreciate that. You guys are coming down like a set schedule. You guys come down to the walk-through, show you what we have done, what needs to be done, stuff like that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for him? Thanks for coming in. Helps a lot.
Yeah, thanks so much for stopping by.
Okay, now we'll have roll call.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Yes, ma'am.
Egley.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
And Klepper's absent.
Approval, May sixteenth, regular council meeting minutes. You have a copy? Any additions, corrections?
I make a motion to approve Ezra.
Second.
I'll second.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Okay, you have before you the bills. I need your approval. Any questions, concerns?
Oberlin Terrible Funeral Home.
It's an endogen burial.
Endogen burial, I presume.
Yeah. So it sure was...
First one we've had.
I think it's the first one we've had since we made the deal.
Been a while.
With Smith.
Yeah. First time I ever seen it, so.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, has anybody got anything else? If not, let's pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin. Beverly.
Yep.
Okay, the Morgue and Commissions Board of Zoneyan Fields met May eighteenth. Minutes are in the packets. Comments on that?
That was the one bomb trigger, right?
Yeah.
I read that. Yeah.
Okay. It was approved. Council Committee, Ordinance Committee, had a verbal report the last meeting, but it was written, so had a chance to read it. Any comments on that? Okay, any other council committee reports? Anybody meet? Administrators report?
Okay, here. The first one there with CSX, I do not have a timeline. They don't know when they will be here to excavate around that center divider support. The east side of it had sunk probably, I'm going to say, two to three inches. There's a suck hole down in there and it's taken some of the structure out. So they did jack up the center of it and there's a steel plate in there. We did camera a drain line down there. It goes from one catch basin to the other because they thought maybe it was our line had collapsed, so we camered it, let CSX look at the camera, the screen and all that. So the village, as far as I know, will be completely out of the wrong there, so we'll, we won't have any issues on our end there, hopefully, but they're talking about shutting that down, but there's no timeline when they'll shut it down, how long it'll be shut down. So just so people are kind of aware of that, that's going to be a real headache.
Well, the state notifies you when they file through the state, then the state will notify you, right?
Supposed to be.
Yeah.
Supposed to be, but it's like when they would shut down North Main Street. Even the state didn't know. They just...
They showed up and shut her down.
Parked a truck there, yeah. Dangler Excavating have, they have currently replaced ten of the sixteen valves. They're in the middle of trying to finish up some smaller projects before they come back to town. So they could be back next week. They could be back end of the month.
I got a question about that, Cory.
Sure.
Talking about the state, though, coming in and paving, they're still scheduled to come in this summer, right, as far as I know?
Yep. I had sent an email this morning to Eric Fanning, which he has passed that email on. The latest update I had was after June first.
But did we get all the valves within the state runways?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
They're all done in not a half?
Yes. The rest of the valves are really just located in the park, from like the big rock at the pool, where you pull into the pool. Road takes you back to the water plant and then out there at Spencerville and Ryan Street.
Excellent. Good.
So they have till July twenty-ninth to complete that. All the sidewalk panels downtown have been changed out and there was, ended up being thirty-four panels total. A small section of curbing on South Main Street was replaced as well. And then the drive, parking lot at the Crippled Children Adult Society, and all that had to get done before they come and start paving some of the side streets, doing some repairs. And they are scheduled to come to town the week of June twentieth. That'll be Eminem asphalt out of Blakeslee. We did get notified that we did get grant, some grant funds and a loan through OPWC for the water tower project. That's all listed there. And that project is actually projected to start September first. It's currently out to bid. So the bid opening is, it's the end of this month and it'll be right here in the council chambers. Well Field Project, Brian Excavating is actually waiting on a flagger. CSX is to schedule a flagger for them. So we're kind of at their beck and call. Brian Excavating will be in, hopefully, next week, depending on the weather, to get a drive cut in for the well drillers. That was something that Orpman has been waiting on, and they've got some smaller jobs as well to finish up before they get to town here. We are now running an ad for a new water superintendent. Jesse's last day will be June fourteenth. I have already been in contact with IFM and they have sent over a proposal, what they would charge us every month to run that. It's actually a really good number.
You're still talking the way that me and you talk?
Mm-hmm.
When you say run it?
Yeah, to basically do the EPA paperwork and just kind of basically meet the EPA requirements for us. They would not be an extra hand out in the field.
Right.
Everybody has noticed, but the house that was burnt there at five oh one East Smith Street has finally been torn down. Looks much better. We were notified the other day of a sinkhole at three seventy-one Musaergon. We will be digging on that Wednesday. It's quite the, it's quite a hole. It's kind of opened up. We're pretty certain it's right along the sewer there. We're not, we're not sure what we're going to find when we open it. It's the last house. As you're heading north, the last house where you get to Parker. It's right at the end of the driveway. It's a big orange barrel on it. Today, the guys did a manhole repair out on Clemmer Road at the entrance to the fairgrounds where they did the, the road wiping. So ended up having to cut out a chunk of that new asphalt. We ended up having to put a four-inch riser on that manhole. I guess there was supposed to have been one put on there when they paved it and it never got done. So that will be added to the paving project. Other than that, I just got a couple things for employment. If you guys want me to go into that now, or you want to wait?
Go ahead.
I was notified today, our cleaning lady, this will be her last week, for cleaning. So we will be putting another posting out there for a part-time cleaning position. And I would also like to, for our opening for our full-time street department, I'd like to recommend to council to hire Garrett Frant, June fifteenth.
Okay, I'll recommend that we hire them. Council's approval?
How'd that go? When, did you ask him those questions or that? How'd that go?
I think pretty well.
You don't think he'll go back?
Nope. I don't think so. Not full-time. I mean, like I said, he'd like to stay part-time. And we had quite the discussion with that, too.
That's what I mean. If he's, if he's working, say he's working a weekend and you guys have a Maine blowout big time.
Correct. We have discussed that and I even talked to Chief Danning about that as well.
That's what I wanted to make, Cory had talked about it.
His street department would be first and foremost, no matter what, so.
If he's not on call, he would just have to call somebody. If they absolutely need him, he would just have to call somebody and, well, to get somebody in it, really. So, and he's not, he will not work at all when he's on call.
Right.
He won't need a drug test or screening or anything, right? He'd just transfer himself. Okay.
And he realizes that if he works a week or two and goes, mm-hmm, I don't like this, he can't just run back to him. Okay.
Okay.
The only thing I would add is, is I know all the stuff to transfer over, but do they operate on anything off seniority? Does he get years of service for village?
Any other questions?
You should.
You're not PERS, though, right?
No, part-time with me, where other police and fire. We go to PERS.
Okay. Still recommending Garrett. Council's approval?
I'll make the mayor's recommendation.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
You did second. Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly. Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Anything else, Cory?
No.
Any questions for administrator?
I see the sign down by Cheryl's has not been changed out. Are you, are you working on that? No parking here at corner.
Oh. I'll make a note of it.
Yes, and it seems like there was another one someplace. Oh, we always, unfortunately, we always mowed the old nolties.
Oh, yes.
And that place is about eleven-teen feet tall right now. Is there any special reason why we don't mow it now? Are we not supposed to, or?
I thought someone was mowing that last year.
The village did.
Oh, the village did.
Yeah.
I think part of the reason why part of the rate got raised up because it was cheaper for them to have us mow it.
Yeah, right.
At the current rate, so part of the reason why the rate got raised up so much.
Oh, I was thinking it was somebody else that was out there mowing and rolling it.
That's, though, it's been the village. From the time it was, all the trailers were removed, the village has mowed it. And then, much like Eric said, we were mowing it way too cheap, so we inflated it.
Price almost doubled it.
Mm-hmm. And now I see this year we're not. So I just wanted to touch bases and...
Now you have to do all the work to see it cleaned up now, about two and a three-foot tall right now.
Yeah, take, you have to hire some little kids to walk through there and make sure what's ahead of the tractor.
I know I had, I had a farmer out to give me a price to mow that twenty acres out behind Haber Drive.
Mm-hmm.
That old tractor we got, it ain't running, so I'm not sure what we're going to throw into it to get it, get it up and running. So he came out and looked at it and quoted five hundred dollars each time he would mow it. I mean, we need to get that one down, too. And a lot of that is just fuel prices.
Do we, do we want to sell that?
Love to.
Streetlight and property needs to have a meeting. Who's Streetlight Property? Me, Tony Eric. We need to, we'll do that after council will set up a date, date and time. Do we want to sell the corner of Arthur and Main?
You were going to break something back, right?
On Arthur and Main?
I forgot about that.
I mean, that piece, myself personally, I don't care whether we sell it or not. Just that's, that's, that's not a make or break deal, but...
I thought we already voted on that, the selling.
It's possible.
Just waiting for...
Okay, so do we have any other property?
My yard might get broke down.
Okay.
Any other questions for administrator?
We got a piece of property there on Spencerville Street. Greg and Don Herman own the empty lot there. And I don't know what it is. It's a ten-foot...
A triangle?
It's just a strip. It's just like a, it's not really even an easement. There's, I mean, there's nothing that goes back through there that the village owns. I think we need to do something with that sliver of property as well.
Give me a location. I can't place it.
You go down Chicago Avenue towards Spencerville Street. You got the White House there. It's between that driveway, kind of L-shaped, stone drive goes back.
Okay.
And that empty lot.
Up next, the park.
If you walk, if you walk through that little open line, it's right, what's that, Field Three?
Yeah.
Right in the outfield, outfield.
Field Three, softball field, yeah.
Field Two.
Two.
Field Two.
So is that the little piece that Kent and I looked at one time that really isn't the village's? It never got transferred from the original developer. It never got sold, so it's still technically, still should have been technically in somebody's name from, like, eighty years ago or sixty years ago.
Same one.
And then at some point, they just said, put the village's name on it. Kent pretty thoroughly researched that, as I recall, because he and I talked about it several times.
So let's forget that one, huh?
Maybe we'll know about that.
You guys know it?
In, in, in essence, that's, that's access to the park, right? So... Okay, we'll leave that alone.
Okay, any other questions for administrator?
Could you give me the title and the name of the man that you just hired?
Garrett Franz.
Can you spell that?
Franz is F-R-A-N-Z.
That was the title that he was hired for?
Uh, street department.
Street, thank you.
Okay, solicitors report. Troy, you're up.
I got the ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero six, first reading by caption only, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised code ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
You said oh-six. Is that oh-seven?
Mine said oh-six.
I had to change it to oh-six. I didn't want to skip a number.
Okay.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Second, third readings of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six by caption only, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
So move.
I'll second. You open Charlie on it. Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Okay, any questions for our solicitor?
And that's basically what we talked about at the last meeting when we were talking about the changes to concealed weapons, fireworks, things of that nature.
Yep.
So that's, once we pass that and then that gets in our code, that's what gets our code identical to the state code on it.
Moving back just a little bit to Cory, what was the engineer's estimate on the water tower? I see we're going to get half a million dollars grants and...
I think it's just shy of one point three, I believe.
Okay, I was just curious.
But that's just construction, not engineering and all that.
Oh, okay.
I thought it didn't cost you too many of the support.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions for our solicitor? Move on. Okay, thanks, Troy. Police chief, you got anything to report?
Only now that I will need to hire. So I need to schedule a meeting prior with police and fire before I do anything to discuss some options here. So...
Shoot Mike right here. Charlie and Tony.
Get together after the meeting and talk about a time.
Okay.
Questions for the chief? Concerns?
I got a quick question. With losing an officer to the street, I mean, with vacation time and all that is going on, are you able to find sufficient scheduling that you have to have?
Well, I mean, we should be okay. I'm just going to have to work. Costs either extra hours or, you know, I've got part-time, but the problem is with part-time, they've all have full-time jobs. Trying to get them to their hours in coordination with our hours, it's tough, but again, we, so, you will do what we have to do to make sure it's covered.
Thanks, Dave. Wait for the fire department to say. Park director, Val.
I don't know how many people know that we had to get a new pump for the pool. It's all they could find. Darren looked. Oh, and he called me today and he said they, said they had to ship. They should be able to do it.
What kind of cost?
Seventy-two hundred for just the pump.
Seventy-two? Okay, that ought to be worse than that.
Well, he's going to have to install it and everything.
And it's an operation to install that down in Pitt.
Well, it's not even...
And that's valves. I mean, you've got the, the pool's falling out?
Well, it's where the pump, old pump was that was leaking the water we had in there.
But I mean, you have the pump, the fuel, do you have the pump? Do you have the pool full?
No.
No.
It was half full.
But it's valves, so that even if it was full, you can still change it.
Yeah, I asked him if that would make a difference.
Right, right. That's the one that's, if you walk in the room, it's right here, then you go down. Yeah.
Yeah, it's 13 years old or 15 years old, so...
It's done well.
I remember when it was 10, the last time. I was just a kid, but I remember it.
I was on Park 11.
Okay, anything else going on?
Well, we got the other restroom toilet replaced, Adventure Alley. We had to put a new one in there. That was done today.
Why?
Because it was leaking underneath.
Oh, but it wasn't vandalizing.
No.
Knock on wood's been kinda quiet. I think the cameras.
Yeah, there's a fire.
Yeah, the pager went off.
Yeah, that was fine.
So, okay.
Their name right now.
Any questions?
I have a quick... We had a kid the other day on Field 5 that had fell and hit like a pretty big rock and like cut his knee. Is there any way you guys rake those fields, if you can try to get some of those rocks out?
You have to ask your neighbor. When we're dragging them, screening them, and bringing them up. And unless we use the Bader Man, the old tractor and everything that we used, it wouldn't do that.
With that new turf, that new stuff they put on, they don't want the Bader Man run, correct?
And when you spike them or drag them with a screen, it brings them up.
So, if we know any kids that need community service, tell them to come see me.
Yeah. Darn right.
I mean, they're stones, I know there's a lot of stones.
Chain them all together and send them out across there.
Okay, any other questions for Val? Thanks, Val. Okay, Cheryl, you're up.
If anyone has any questions about the fund status or our revenue and expenditures report, we also have the May income tax and utility collections, and Kim said to remind you that last year, the income tax date was different. That's why she's got a bad number this year, this month. We have the May mayor's court report, the revolving loan report, and one of the five-acre mills is going to be paid off, or just got paid off, and one of the APG is gonna be paid off in July, so our income is going way down. I put in the notice from OPRS that they are now offering colonial life to anyone who's in PERS, but just to let everybody here know that we have been carrying it for years, so we already have it, if anyone's interested. I put in the list of the Department of Public Safety Drug Funding Law Enforcement Awards. I just always like to look at when somebody local gets money, but not us. But anyway, there's an update from the One Ohio Recovery Foundation. I put a little note on the bottom, you only got the little blurb because it's 47 pages long, but feel free to go look it up if you want, and that's about the money that we possibly will get for the opioid crisis. And I put in the OML notice about pending legislation that will impede municipal collections of utilities, and it is, I don't know what they're thinking, but just to let you know that it's coming down the line, that will like tie our hands in collecting, not from homeowners anymore, only if they have renters, it's a renter, period. Can't go after the owner.
Did force on us two, three years ago?
Yeah, they're still at it. I think they're landlords. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Any questions for Cheryl? Thanks. Mayor's report, the only thing I have is, I wasn't around when it happened, but 78 years ago was D-Day invasion, this is today, and I had a lot of friends that was in that Battle of the Bulge, all that, at Normandy, and so just kinda remember those people. I know there's a lot of family, and what I read was between 8,000 and 9,000 people died that first day, both sides, you know, Germany and... So, that was a, you know, 78 years, World War II, so I don't think there's too many alive anymore, but family, you know, there's a lot of families, so. June 2nd, we had our first concert series, Clapper Construction was the sponsor, and the next one is June the 23rd at the Hubert. So, that's all I have. Questions for me, or anything needs to be brought before this council?
We have the Day in the Park on June 25th from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
June the 25th, okay. 9 till when?
11:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
11 to 9, okay. You're having a band down there that night, too?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's a Saturday, I see. Okay, anything else needs to be brought up? What's going on in the community? Okay. Make motion to adjourn. Second.
What's the date on the Day in the Park?
25th.
We'll have a roll call.
Barth.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
You betcha.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.